It's preparing to stream.
Is it ready? Streaming?
Probably has, but give me a second to confirm it's actually started. Normally starts a bit early, so this is probably live as well, but we'll see. And yes, we're live.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting on Wisbeach Town Council. If a member wishes to speak on agenda item, he or she should indicate by raising your hand. Voting on proposal and recommendation should also be indicated on this way. I will now invite to confirm your attendance through roll call. I shall read out in alphabetical order each member surname and invite him or her to indicate by saying here that he or she is present. councillor Hill?
Was that supposed to be me? Yes?
No, councillor Hill.
Hill, councillor Hill, sorry.
We have an apology from councillor Hill, chairman, okay?
councillor Miss Hoy?
Present.
Okay. councillor Human?
Present.
councillor Kettering?
Present.
Yeah. councillor Lynn?
Present, chairman.
Thank you. councillor Moll?
Present.
councillor Meekins?
Present.
councillor Oliver?
Present.
Thank you. councillor Patrick?
Immuted.
Immuted.
Present.
Thank you. councillor Mrs Bechli Vanova, sorry.
Present.
Thank you. councillor Prest?
We have an apology from councillor Prest.
Okay, thank you. councillor Rackley?
Present.
councillor Tibbs?
councillor Tibbs may be late or not at all.
councillor Tierney?
Present.
councillor Topgut?
Present.
councillor Mrs Wallworth, please?
Present.
councillor Wing is no any more.
No, he should no longer be under this, chairman.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Yes, councillor Hoy?
Yeah, I just would like to pass on councillor Patrick has to leave the meeting now, but he's obviously had personal reasons, but he'll be now going, but obviously he has attended the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number one. Remembering people who died during 2020. In recent years, Wisbeach Town Council has issued its December meeting to stand for one minute's silence to remember those who has died during the year. Councillor Tierney had produced a list of those to be remembered, and I invite him to read that list to you. After the list of names has been read to council, members are invited to stand in silence for one minute.
Chairman, I wonder if this year we would just sit in silence, because I think if we all stood, the people, the viewers will just see our bellies and it'll be strange.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Seven years ago, it was proposed and agreed that Wisbeach Town Council would use its December meeting each year to stand for a minute's silence for those who we have lost during the year. We will be sitting in silence for those whose names are well known to many, but also for those who, while not famous or well known, are nonetheless sadly missed by those who knew and loved them. My list this year includes country musicians Charlie Pride, Kenny Rogers and Charlie Daniels, country songwriters Billy Joe Schaver and Jerry Walker, influential guitarist Eddie Van Halen, pop star Helen Reddy, Tommy DeVito of The Four Seasons, Bruce Williamson of The Temptations, producer Eric Murillo, thrash metal singer Riley Gale, Bonnie Pointer of The Pointer Sisters, rock and roll star Little Richard, British rocker Brian Howe, singer Bill Withers, singer Johnny Dash and Peter Green of Fleetwood Mac, TV presenter Alex Trebek, TV writer William Blin, mascoteer Bonny Lou Hearn, actor Michael Lonsdale, actor Ben Cross, singer and actor Trini Lopez, Glee star Naya Rivera, actress Kelly Preston, director Joel Schumacher, Hollywood icon Irfan Khan, actress Anna Blackman, actor Jay Benedict, teenage actor Logan Williams, actor Geoffrey Palmer, actor and comedian John Sessions, comedian Bobby Ball of Cannon and Ball, Eddie Large of Little and Large, actor Dave Prowse, who was Darth Vader and also the Green Cross man, Green Cross code man for people who grew up in the eighties, actress Dame Diana Rigg, legendary actor Kirk Douglas, Michael Angelis, voice of Thomas the Tank Engine, writer John Le Carre, writer Brian Dennehy, long time WWE announcer Howard Finkel, TV producer Thomas L Miller, British academic and editor Christopher Tolkien, son of J R R, Irish politician John Hume, British biochemist James Palmer, Frank Carney, co-founder of Pizza Hut, grandstand presenter Frank Bow, basketball legend Kobe Bryant, Rocky Solman Johnson, the legendary pro wrestler and father of Dwayne The Rock Johnson, Chuck Yeager, American Hall of Fame parlor and the first person to exceed the speed of sound, professional footballer Diego Maradona, footballer Nobby Stiles, footballer Jack Charlton, snooker player Willie Thorne and Formula One star Sir Sterling Ross, comedian Tim Book Taylor of The Goody's, TV presenter Caroline Flack, entertainer Des O'Connor, comedian Terry Jones, who co-founded Monty Python, American Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, actor Sean Connery, Dame Barbara Windsor, actor Chadwick Boseman, singer Dame Vera Lynn and locally Wisbeach D-Day hero Ronald Sanderson, who was given freedom of the town of Wisbeach with two other heroes in 2017, recognizing their wartime bravery. We will also be sitting in silence for those local people who have passed away during the year, including local man Mike Forest. Finally, longstanding public servants and friends to many here, councillors Kit Owen and Alan Bristow. This is not a complete or exhaustive list, and for any I have missed, it was certainly not intentional, and our minute silence includes those unnamed as well as those named. Remembering that each and every individual who is no longer with us, whether they died through natural causes or otherwise, is a loss to us all. One minute silence, please. That's one minute. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tierney. Item number two. To receive members' apologies for absence, I invite the clerk to report any apologies for absence that he has received from members of the council.
Thank you, chairman. I've received apology for absence from councillors Hill, councillor Prest and councillor Tibbs, and as members will be aware, councillor Patrick needed to leave the meeting early. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you.
But councillor is now here.
Councillor Tibbs there, yeah. Good evening. Thank you. Item number three. Open forum, public participation. In normal circumstances, members of the public will have the opportunity to make an oral representative to the meeting in the public. As this opportunity does not currently exist, members of the public are invited to submit the text of their representation in writing to the town clerk pre-ordered meeting. Any representation received will be read out by the clerk. I invite the clerk to read out any written representation that he has received from members of the public.
Thank you, chairman. On this occasion, I've received no representations from members of the public.
Okay, thank you. Item number four. Vacancy in the members of the Wisbeach Town Council. I invite the clerk to report formally the resignation of Mr Phil Wing on 2nd of October 2020 from membership of the council and to inform the council of the situation with regards to filling this vacancy.
Thank you, chairman. As members will obviously already be aware, Mr Wing resigned membership of the town council on the 2nd of October. There's obviously need to report it formally to councillors the first meeting since that date. Members will also be aware that the notice was, sorry, the notice of vacancy was declared by the returning officer of the district council. The necessary 10 signatures were submitted, which requires an election to be called. Because of the coronavirus situation, the government's decided that no elections would take place until the 6th of May 2021. So we'll carry the vacancy at that time. Obviously, if the vacancy is contested, there will be an election on the 6th of May. Thank you, chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Item number five. Committees of the council. I ask members to consider filling the vacancy on the assets management committee case by the council resignation mentioned at agenda item number four. Members may wish to do this now or wait until the vacancy in the council members has been filled. Do you have any comments from councillors?
Just wait until after the election, chairman. Just wait till after the election, I think, probably best.
Anyone else? Councillor Tibbs?
Yeah, I'd just like to second that and say that I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's just for the best.
Okay, in favour or have a vote? Take a vote, please?
Yep, that's carried, chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number six. To receive members' declaration of disclosibly pecuniary, non-disclosibly pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest in relation to agenda item. I invite the members to declare any interest that they have in relation to any items on this agenda. When declaring interest, please please the nature and extent of the interest. In that case, non-pecuniary of the interest. Do you have any declarations from any member? No? Okay, move to next item. Item number seven. Fennel and District Council to receive information in relation to district council activities relevant to Wisbeach, including. Understand that there may be a matter to which the clerk wishes to draw members' attention, particularly the specific item mentioned on the agenda. This item also provides the opportunity for those Wisbeach Town councillors, who are also members of Fennel and District Council, to do likewise.
Okay, if I may, chairman, yes, I've got quite a number of things to report in respect of Fennel and District Council. Some of this reporting back on decisions or reflect decisions that have been made by the town council in the past. Firstly, as mentioned on the agenda, item seven brackets one is an update on FDC's proposals in terms of widening some footpaths and installing additional play equipment within Wisbeach Park. Current situation is, as members will be aware, the district council had proposals for enhance the park, both in terms of new replacement of play equipment and, as considered at the last meeting of the town council, the proposed widening of certain pathways. Ideally, that would lead to the production of a running track. District council has a sum of £20,000 available from section 106 planning obligation payments, and the head of leisure services had made application to the Mick George Community Fund, that's the landfill tax credit scheme, for a further £40,000. However, that bid was unsuccessful. The current situation is that the head of leisure services at FDC is awaiting designs from engineers for the pathways/running track works. Any scheme now would not take place until the financial year 2122. He's seeking to identify other sources of grant funding to fund the whole package of works, that's the play equipment and the pathway/running track. The proposals for the toddler play equipment generally are to replace old with new, it's not additional provision. And the head of leisure services at FDC says if further application for grant funding is not successful, FDC may be asking the town council to not only give an opinion as to which works it feels are priority within the funding that is available or the opportunity to make financial contribution towards play equipment and the path improvements. But obviously, we will not know any more until such time as the design works have been done and costed for the running track slash pathway and any applications to other potential sources of funding. But it's a bit of a sort of update in terms of where things have got to and also flagging up the fact that members may be asked to consider priorities in the event that further funding isn't obtained, or as I said, alternatively, whether the town council wishes to make financial contribution to see more delivered within Wisbeach Park. Also, I've had discussions with the head of leisure services, that is the situation. I'm happy to take any questions if members have them.
Any questions from any member? Councillor Hoy?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't think we can necessarily commit to money now, seeing as we don't know the exact sum, but I think we can probably commit to priorities now. I mean, in my opinion, we promised the running track a while ago, so in my opinion, that's number one priority, and I think we could probably say that now. I don't know what other people feel, but that's just my opinion.
Councillor Tierney, please?
As councillor Hoy says, we don't know the figures yet, but I think we need to stand behind all of our bids going forwards, because we've reached a great point now, where next year, a lot of stuff is going to be delivered, I think, almost at the same time. It just happens that lots of different projects are coming together. And if it needs us to back them in some way or other, I think we need to stand ready to do exactly that.
Any more comments or do you think it's a proposal or?
I think obviously-
I'm happy to propose now, if someone's second, I'm happy to propose now that we commit, that we say that we prefer the running track to be done first, and then they come back to us when they've got more financial information to go from there. Because I mean, don't get me wrong, obviously the toddler play equipment is important, but they've already got some stuff there and they haven't got the running track and they have been asking for it for a long while, and I know like Andrew's been doing a lot of work with Gary Blough and them and talking about what they're gonna have there, so it'd be nice to see it through, really.
And I think if I may, chairman, as I did make the point earlier, as was mentioned by head of leisure services, the toddler play equipment provision is replacing old with new, it's not additional provision. So I think sort of off the record, it's like he's feeling that members would be behind the running track as a priority.
Do I have a second, please? Uh, I think councillor Tierney or Lynn calls for- councillor Tierney?
Andrew's got his hand up.
Either one of us, I don't mind. Councillor Lynn can do it.
Councillor Lynn?
Either one, it's fine. We're both called.
I don't know, both at the same time, so. Councillor Tierney? Yeah, a second there. All in favour, please? Have a vote, please? Who's in favour?
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to part two of the item. I have already forwarded out to councillors the draft taxi, hacky carriage and private hire licensing policy, which has been produced by FDC in line with new statutory guidance that came into force July this year. So because of the number of changes that required under the legislation, potentially looking at a new policy rather than trying to amend the existing one, consultation process runs from the 7th of December until the 17th of January. Obviously, this is members' opportunity to make comments as a council on this operational policy of the licensing service. Do members have any comments?
Councillor Rackley, please? You're muted, sorry. He can't hear you.
Still muted.
Muted? Yeah.
Yeah, it's that conflict of interest maybe with my job, so perhaps I shouldn't vote.
Okay.
So no particular comments from members?
Anybody else, please, yeah? No?
It's fine, chairman.
Okay?
No?
No comments?
Okay.
Fair enough, okay? Right, moving on to just a couple of updates. At the on the 20th of August, through the delegated powers arrangements, I consulted members in relation to supporting a bid from Fennel and District Council for some loan shark awareness funding. It went through the community safety partnership and the bid, although a sum of £20,000 was applied for, the district councils managed to obtain £6,000, and it's just really to update members on the fact that town council supported the bid back in August, the district council through the community safety partnership as a successful bid, and they will be using the money to develop an action plan for delivery of the project during the summer of 2021, and it is to run an awareness campaign, particularly through the schools of loan sharks and how to recognize a loan shark and how to report issues where families are affected. So I think it's quite helpful that, say, town council supported the bid and money, albeit not for the full amount, that was applied for, say, a sum of £6,000 has been obtained for this project. So some good news. Right, moving on, I've also another further update. Members in May and August of this year were consulted twice on a review of the district council's dog public space protection order. The response from Wisbeach Town Council on both occasions was to support continuation of the protection afforded by the order. Now been informed by the district council that the cabinet approved the application for a new order on the 16th of November. This means that the council will be able to continue with tackling irresponsible dog ownership throughout enforcement where appropriate. And finally, another update. On the 16th, sorry, on the 6th of July, the town council responded to the district council's consultation exercise in relation to review of the Wisbeach alcohol public spaces protection orders. The town council decided that it would like to see the orders continue to operate in the current manner and to let you know that the orders were originally put in place in October 2017, they need to be reviewed every three years. And following the consultation, the district council has now renewed those orders in the current locations for a further period of three years on the 20th of October 2020. So that's just a report back in terms of consultation results. I have nothing else to report in terms of Fennel and District Council. As was mentioned by the chairman earlier, there's the opportunity for any district council member to give any updates that they wish to draw to town council members' attention. Thank you.
Councillor Tierney, please?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I just wanted to update people. We had a Fennel and District Council meeting just before this meeting, and an attempt was made to overthrow the previous motion to stop land sales that might potentially benefit the incinerator in Wisbeach. As you know, all three levels of council have voted against the incinerator. The attempt to overthrow the motion was defeated. The motion stays in place. It only has another six or eight weeks to run before it comes to the end of its time, and then we'll have to decide what to do then. But I am pleased to say that protection remains in place.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? This item? No? Thank you. Item number eight. Cambryshire County Council to receive information in relation to county council activities relevant to Wisbeach. I understand that there may be a matter to which the clerk wishes to draw members' attention. The item also provides the opportunity for those Wisbeach Town Councils, who are also members of Cambryshire County Council, to do likewise.
Yes, not much to report in terms of the county, chairman. I will just make the point that, I mean, I've seen correspondence from the local highway authority saying that the works in terms of making assessments or preparing the local highway improvement schemes, the two schemes that were submitted by the town council are underway, and I know there's been some comments sent to councillor Tierney and asking for specific consideration as the ward councillor for one of those schemes. There again, as we mentioned earlier, there's the opportunity for county councils on this council to give any updates that they may have. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Tierney, please?
Yes, thank you. So I've got three things on this. The first one is, as just alluded to by the clerk, the minor highways bid that we successfully got through for South Brink. I'm having very much the same problems as I had the last time that we had the same thing on South Brink. If you remember, residents are concerned about the speed that people use to cut through and come along the road endangering elderly residents and pedestrians. So we had a width restrictor put in, and the intention was always to put further width restrictors along the road so as to have continual physical impediments to people speeding. Now, it's fair to say that there was a mixed reception to the previous one, but then there always is to everything that you do. But I've done my best to get another set in, and the first time we did this, we were told, no, that you can't have it, and lots of technical reasons. I had to fight for two years to get that bid through, and it looks like, I'm afraid, it's probably gonna be the same thing again for all the same reasons, but I wanted to just make you aware of what was going on. Second, I wanted to say that I wanted to thank councillor Lynn and councillor Hoy for their help with the Haviland Road. It is now on the list for resurfacing, and I know that lots of roads we need resurfacing, and there is more coming through. But that is one that has been a particular thorn in my side and in the residents' side, and I'm really pleased to see that it's finally, it looks like it's going ahead now. And both the councillors who supported me and everyone else, thank you very much for that. And there was a third thing, but I can't remember what it was, so that will have to do.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Item number nine. To confirm signature by chairman when possible, the minutes of the meeting on Wisbeach Town Council held on 7th of September 2020. These minutes have been circled and members have had opportunity to decide whether they are true and correct record with the last meeting on the council. I'm seeking my proposal and second for confirmation of these minutes. I shall make arrangements with the clerk for my signature the minutes. Do I have a proposal, please? Councillor Tibbs?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that, thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Councillor Human? Can't hear you, councillor Human, sorry.
I'll second it, sorry, I just indicated, yeah.
Thank you. Can I have a vote, please?
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. Item number 10. Motion to the council, call for police action. I call open councillor Miss Hoy to propose her motion to the council. I invite members' comments?
Yep, so my motion is as tabled in the agenda. Basically, it says that we know in recent months and years, there's been an increase in both the fear of antisocial behaviour and experiencing antisocial behaviour in the town, most specifically the centre of town. Councillors have received increasing reports of concern regarding large groups of youths and other people gathering and engaging in antisocial behaviour. There is a real feeling that this matter is not given the gravity it deserves in respect of local policing. Shoplifting has become rife in the town shops, which is having a detrimental impact upon local businesses. The social and economic cost of antisocial behaviour and shoplifting are extremely damaging to the town, its businesses and residents. So what we'll resolve to do is to write to the chief constable and the police and crime commissioner regarding this matter, request a plan to prevent the rise in ASB and shoplifting in Wisbeach is drawn up and put into action by the police, and request that the police report back to the town council on a quarterly basis with their plans and showing a level of success with a view to seeing action in. Now, I don't know what success this is gonna have. I'm hoping it won't just have none, but something needs to be done. I mean, I was having a meeting with Kevin from the horse fair about a couple of things that we're looking at doing. For example, through the ground Fennel and money that's available, we're talking about potentially like getting a shop watch back up and running and things, and what he was saying is really that in the town centre, there is just so much, I mean, a number of people have reported to me, like residents and councillors have seen it as well. Just people congregating like all day long. People are saying that they don't feel safe to like get off the bus because there's gangs of people hanging around outside the bus station. He's saying the numbers of shoplifting now is worse than it's ever been in history, he's known it, and I think the shops are really struggling, and if the shops keep struggling, they're gonna close, and then people are gonna wonder why we've got no shops in the town. And actually, our town's doing quite well compared to a lot of other towns. We don't actually have a great deal of empty shops at the moment, there isn't actually many vacancies, but I just feel like something, I just feel like the police- I know it's not an easy job, and I know they're saying they've got resources issues and et cetera, et cetera, and it's not that easy, but at the same time, we can't just keep letting this slide because it's just not fair.
Councillor Lynn, please?
Thanks, chairman. Just going on to what Sam just said there about lack of resources. I don't think we should accept that from the police when they've just got rid of all the PCSOs that would do the sort of on-the-street work. We need policing in Wisbeach, there's no two which ways about it. We need help in Wisbeach, the shops need help, residents need help, everybody needs help. And it can only be done with better policing than what we've had. I remember three years ago, we kept reporting a bike gang. We watched that bike gang get grow, older and get increasingly more violent and dangerous and doing more and more stuff. Now we've got a new, now we've got other younger lads that are coming out, younger than these, the next generation. What are we going to be sitting here in three years? Living off the atrocities of what could have been stopped now. We need some help and we need it very quickly. And these kids need help before they end up doing something that they could never, ever take back. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Moore, please.
Yeah, thank you, chair. I have to say, I do agree where the motion that councillor Hoy has put forward. And obviously, we do have a major issue in town and everything that she's highlighted is indeed correct. The issues that are having this is that, and councillor Lynne just alluded to it about the resource issue. As far as I understand, I think the decision about PCSO is put back till tomorrow, but it's inevitable it's going to happen. So the policing have got, the police have got a funding issue. And maybe we can call upon our county councillors to put pressure at county and also at the combined authority level to assist the police with funding issues so we can increase resources. You know, we obviously need more bobbies on the beach and they can't be everywhere where we need them to be. Second to that, I also think, yes, the, 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 the issue that we're having with the, the antisocial behaviour is young groups or young adults or kids, whatever they are. Maybe we should be looking at doing something that we can try and encourage them into other groups or things that we can do for them. I appreciate there are structured groups around such as cadets, et cetera, but not every kid wants structure. They want, I don't know, social clubs. And I just think we need to try and reach out and try and look at it from a different angle. Instead of, obviously, yes, it is a nuisance, yes, it is a pain and I'm a shop owner myself. But I think we might, might need to just look at the bigger picture of it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Chairman, I'm also a shop owner. I don't think I need to declare an interest, but I'll mention it anyway nonetheless. So I, I sit on the police, the crime panel at County Council. And at the last panel meeting, the police said that they have more police officers now than they have ever had in this county. Now, if that's the case, where on earth are they? Because, and, and, you know, to say that they've got a resource issue and then to say they've got more police than they've ever had. Those two things don't jar, do they? Because what, what they're really saying is they've got a choices issue, about how they allocate those resources. You can't on the one hand say you've got more resources than ever and on the other hand say you, you can't do things because your resource starved. And the problem with all of this is anytime we bring these issues up, somebody will say we're bashing the police. Last thing I want to do is bash the police, they do an incredible job, we could not live without them. I don't want them to feel bad, but we've got no choice. When our residents are concerned and our businesses are concerned, we've got to raise the issue. That's our job as, as representatives and this is how we do it. So I think we've got to say to the police, look, we appreciate it's not easy. If it were easy, there'd be no crime. But this cannot go on. It can't go on that people will lose faith in, in the town and, and its policing and its management if they don't feel like they're safe when they go to their shopping centre and if businesses don't feel safe to open their doors. So I, I've got to say, now's probably the time to do it because of course, next year we have PCC elections. And I want to see all the candidates tell me what they're going to do in regards to neighbourhood and local policing. You know, I, I recognise that there are much higher things going on like smuggling and, and other sorts of crime and murders and really serious things. But you can't ignore this low level crime because I think it was Mayor Rudy Giuliani who said, you know, you've got to start with zero tolerance and then that feeds all the way up, up the scale. I'd like to see the police take that sort of approach. So I fully support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Hoy, please.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I do hear what you're saying about resourcing issue, but that's the whole point of why I'm saying it. Because County Council Combined Authority, they've got no say over the police. The, the police have got their own budget. The Police and Crime Commissioner is the one that sets that budget, is the one that can raise the council tax. And he, we're basically almost powerless. So like the whole, the whole idea of the Police and Crime Commissioner was to have someone that was accountable and that we could answer to. But, you know, we're often told, oh, I can't get involved in operational matters or, you know, something similar. And I just feel like we're really sort of being in, in trouble here because it just feels like we've got no, no way to have any kind of recourse at all.
Councillor Mackens, please.
Yeah, thanks, chair. And a couple of points, picking up on what councillor Hoy said in the introduction to the motion. And she'd had the conversation with the guy at Horse Fair, how shoplifting's gone up. I mean, I wonder if those figures tally with when they got rid of the security guard from the Horse Fair? Because, I mean, he was a visible decar and as, you know, in that area and also around town. Second thing is, I did contact councillor Hoy about this motion and it's in the resolutions, number three. And it's getting the police to report back to the Town Council on a quarterly basis. If this, our motion goes through tonight, which I hope it does, could we put in there that for the first, say, three months, we get a monthly report back from them? And then if it does seem to be working, then extend it to quarterly, rather than, you know, just leaving it for quarterly right from the start. I do think, as I said to you in my email to you, councillor Hoy, I think it's a really good idea and I'm fully behind it.
Okay. Councillor Tierney, please.
Sorry, I just wanted to come back because councillor Hoy made me think of something else. So she's right about the, the Police and Crime Commissioner continually saying he can't get involved in operational policing. And I said, again, in the last meeting, I got very frustrated with him and anyone's welcome to have a check of the YouTube and see that I, I did take him to task a little bit because it seemed like every single question he was asked, he would palm it off to one of the, one of the police officers or say, I can't get involved. And that is not the principle of the PCC, that's not how they were created. They're supposed to lead on strategy. He can't go in and tell the police, you've got to arrest this guy, you've got to go to this house. He can't do that for sure, but he absolutely can and should be saying to them, we need to change our, our balance of, of spending, we need to do a bit more local policing. Of course he should. And whatever you say about the previous PCC, and I know that ended sadly, but, you know, I think he, he was doing it. Now, the new Police and Crime Commissioner, who came in, it's not his fault because he was the deputy and he came in. But I, I don't have a great deal of faith, I'm looking forward to the elections.
Anybody else have any comment? On a proposal?
Yeah, so obviously I've proposed the motion, I don't know if anyone's had a second.
Can I have a second then? Councillor Lynne, please. Councillor Lynne was a second. Those in favour? Can I have a vote, please?
Can't see councillor Walwalk's hand, but other than that, it's unanimous.
I think she's trying to connect and she have issues with internet, I believe.
We have a substantial majority anyway, no one's voted against.
Okay, everyone. Item number 11, I invite the chairman of Wisbeach Anti-Incinerator Working Party. I invite the chairman of the Working Party to update members on these activities to date and propose for delivering a pain of, of opposition to a proposed incinerator for Wisbeach. Any recommendations to council from the Working Party will need to be the subject of voting by members.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. I took over in July from councillor Ben Priest and I want to put on record my thanks to Ben for the hard work he did in launching the Working Party, getting the banners sorted out and obviously the public meeting in March. I have managed to arrange a liaison with Wiswin, who is councillor David Patrick. To date, I have not, I have received no information from councillor Patrick. I had hoped we could have at least formed a joint working party, but this was rejected by Mr and Mrs Buckner as representing the Winswick group. I gave Mr and Mrs Buckner a personal invitation to attend to the November meeting of the Working Party, which they accepted. However, they have declined to attend any further meetings, which I find disappointing as to get this monstrosity stop from being built. Wisbeach Town Council is the elected organisation to represent the interests of the people of Wisbeach and the support of Fendland District Council and Cambridgeshire County Council. It seems that Wiswin has its own agenda. We've started putting the banners up with property owners' permission. We have had meetings in October and November. Our friends from Kings Lynn have attended both meetings and forwarded many items of constructive advice. At the October meeting, we received excellent presentations from our friends of Kings Lynn and Mo Stewart. At the November meeting, we again have representations from both, suggesting that both Winswick and the Wisbeach Town Council Group could take different ways to get the object of this monstrosity not being built. But if Wiswin is not to work with Wisbeach Town Council Group, I cannot see this happening. At the November meeting, Mrs Brenda Barber came up with the excellent idea to get the Fendland Citizen or a newspaper to produce a special edition, which, to oppose the incinerator. I looked into this and 10,000 copies, one delivered to each property in Wisbeach, would work out a production cost of £2,300 plus VAT plus delivery costs. The delivery source in question, though, could not do the work at that time when I spoke to them. So this matter is in hold. We could, or Wisbeach Town Council could produce a leaflet, but how many people actually read leaflets and not put them in the junk mail? I have approached a local architect and planning specialist, Swan Edwards Architectural Limited, and had conversations with their director, James Burton, who, subject to Wisbeach Town Council's approval, will come on board to help us to fight this on a commercial basis. I should add on to this that we spoke, or I spoke to a company that was recommended to me that does this nationally and we were quoted a budget of £50,000. Now, my feelings on that was if we're going to spend money, I would rather spend it on a local firm who have their heart in the job and not just doing it for the money. Because if they fail, we've still got to pay them. I remind all that we are a working party and subject to Wisbeach Council's standing orders. This means that many matters of policy and funding would need to be decided by the council. Working Party would, however, make recommendations to the council. The council may need to consider making financial provision in next year's budgets for a fighting fund, which may include the costs of a special advice. Now, that's what I've written down, but at heart, we've got to, we, we're not builders. We don't know planning rules and regulations and we really do need expert help. It's all well and good people going down the street and waving banners and best of luck to them. But at the end of the day, we are layman when it comes to what we actually need to do this job. And we need a set of budget for at least two years to raise some funds to do this job properly. I pass my report to the committee, to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Councillor Hume. Councillor Hoy, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to Peter for his work that he's been doing on this. It's really good to have someone sort of obviously working in the background and just getting on. Thank you. In regards to the point about Swan Evans, I do agree, right, it's better if we were to use someone local. But in terms of funding things, I don't think we can necessarily say tonight because we don't know how much it's going to cost. But I know that we've got the budget coming up, I think, next month or the month after. So perhaps could I politely suggest maybe if you can go away and have a, I know it's always difficult sometimes to talk about finances with someone and say sort of how much, but if we could perhaps get an idea from him, a rough idea, and then maybe try and feed that into the, to the budget planning. Because obviously, like you say, I think the idea of a fighting chest is a nice idea. But I don't think maybe we don't know enough information yet. And just quickly to caveat that, before anyone says, oh, you know, that we're, we're not taking it seriously. We do, we, we haven't yet, still no application has gone in, we must remember that. So if people are trying to sort of say, you're not doing enough or you're not working fast enough, that is a little bit of scaremongering because obviously we do have to keep people alert and, and keep things on in the background. But obviously, as we say, application hasn't gone in yet.
Thank you. Councillor Hume, please.
As you quite rightly say, Sam, or councillor Hoy, everything is totally hypothetical at the moment. It's not a lot we can do until we get any plans down. But the feedback I had from the company, they were giving me solutions to problems that have questions I hadn't even put to them. But I'll try and get some sort of budget-y figure. But again, it's the old stories, how long is a piece of string? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Tierney, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had recently put out a letter across a fair part of my county division, certainly Waterleys, Northford and Medworth. And the letter was talking about what we've done on the incinerator so far, to sort of clarify the, the story so far, if you like. And then I invited people to contact me just to say whether they supported the work or whether they support the incinerator because it's always nice to make sure that you've got the people behind you. And of the 53 responses I've had, which might not seem like a lot, but that's a lot for coming back from a newsletter, trust me. And from the 53 I've had so far, only one said, I want the incinerator. All of the others were absolutely supporting it. So I think that gives you an idea of the cross section of public.
Yeah, that's good. Anybody else like to comment? Any member? Councillor Hoy, please.
Yeah, I just want to say, really, just publicly, and this isn't, I don't, this isn't a negative on anyone else. So please don't anyone think it is, but I just wanted to thank councillor Moore for his support today on the incinerator because it was much appreciated. I just thought I'd take opportunity to that publicly.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Moving to item number 12, growing Fendland bids. The clerk will provide members with an update on the situation with regards to bids for projects in Wisbeach and ask council to consider Wisbeach Town Council agreeing to underwrite the potential revenue costs estimated £1,500 per annum of the bid in respect to water play facility at Wisbeach Park.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, just to give members an update in terms of what's happening with the growing Fendland bids in relation to Wisbeach and also say the specific item that was mentioned. So the next round of combined considerations by the combined authority for monies under the growing Fendland pot is, is January and the deadline for submission of those bids is to have them to the district council, which effectively submits them all to the CPCA by the 23rd of December. We've currently got, there are five projects or schemes. The first one I'll mention of members, which members are already aware of and the money's already been achieved. And that is the £200,000 towards the marketplace enhancement scheme. And the district council is now making a request to the combined authority that the money for that scheme comes directly to the Town Council rather than via the district council, which, which seems eminently sensible. I know that that view is also shared by the leader of the council. Also, as already been, we're also looking at me writing a bid for footfall counters for the town. There are already footfall counters in the horse fair, but not in the main town itself. So there was a meeting last week, which involved myself, the manager of the Horse Fair Shopping Complex, the leader of the council, the CCTV manager at FDC. And on that basis, we have enough information. When we get some more information from the company that runs the footfall counters currently in the horse fair, as I say, a bid will be submitted by the district council to the combined authority, as I said, in, in time for the deadline of the 23rd of December. I'm also working on another bid and that's one that councillor Hoy mentioned slightly earlier, earlier on. And that's for shop watch radio scheme, that's to refresh and renew the whole scheme and the Town Council take an active role, but working with the Chamber of Commerce. As I say, that, that bid will also be going in by the deadline of the 23rd of December. And then likewise, any monies, if the bid is successful, will come directly to the Town Council as opposed to by FDC. There's also a proposal which FDC is working on, that's for a Wisbeach Business Capital Grant Scheme. I understand the Economic Development Team are putting work into that and that's for a £200,000 figure as a capital grant scheme. And finally, the fifth element or the fifth. And finally, the fifth element, or the fifth project, is the water park, which, as members will be aware, was originally an item potentially for consideration of the county council's capital, community capital fund. It was unsuccessful. The town council had agreed to put some funding into that, that's an element of matched funding, and FDC will be bidding for £147,500. It's estimated that there will be potentially revenue costs of £1,500 a year, and that's now moving on to the agenda. The district council are not in a position to underwrite the revenue costs, and because of the CPCA funding is for capital, for the application to be approved, it's likely that there'll need to be a commitment to support the revenue costs. The revenue costs, as I said, are £1,500, which in the grand scheme of things is not a significant sum if it means it will help this new facility for Wisbeach Park. There again, something else that was also mentioned by councillor Tierney earlier about things being developed in the park and more and more happening there. As I say, so I'm putting to members the suggestion that came through from councillor Hoy previously, when it was flagged up by FDC, that the town council considers underwriting the potential revenue costs of up to £1,500 per annum. And obviously, there again, that will factor in any budget considerations if members agree to that course of action. I need to inform FDC fairly quickly if that is the case, because that needs to be factored into the bid that they will be submitting to the Combined Authority next week. So back to you, chairman, in terms of seeking members' views.
Have any comments from the members or the proposal, please? Councillor Hume?
Well, I think if we want the facility, it's well worth it, £1,500 a year to pay for the upkeep. That's my opinion.
Councillor Tierney, please.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Hume.
So you're proposing?
I'll make that a proposition, yes.
Councillor Tierney's second thing. All those in favour, please?
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Item number 13. Delegated powers. Future to the minutes 39-20 to consider the need of continuous of the powers which were delegated to the clerk to be exercised in consultation with the leader of the council under 11 committee chairman and took effect from 24th of March 2020. At 13th of May 2020, a meeting of the council members decided that the powers which had been delegated to the clerk to be reaffirmed and continued at that time. With future continues being reviewed at the next meeting of Wisbeach Town Council at 6th of July, 10th of August and 7th of September 2020. Meeting of the council, it was decided that the delegate powers to be continued, but reviewed again at today's meeting. As the powers to hold virtual meeting exist, it may be that these delegated powers no longer need to be exercised. However, because of ongoing uncertainties and to provide the council with a mechanism which allows it to respond quickly to an issue, such as an argument request for the grant funding, it may, on balance, be best for the remainder, for the time being, but be reviewed at the next meeting of the council. I'm seeking a proposal and a second for the course of action. Councillor Hoy, please.
Yeah, can I propose that we continue it but bring to an end at the next meeting, if it's going to be sort of February time? Because I think by that point, it'd been quite a while, and we'd had a lot of experience with Zoom and things. And hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll be coming to the end of this pandemic, fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
I'm happy to second it, although I am a little concerned about the power going to the clerk's head and him trying to take over the world. But then I remember that it's just Wisbeach Town Council and we'll be fine. So yes, absolutely, let's carry on.
Thank you. Can I have a vote, please?
That's unanimous, chairman, and the power hasn't gone to my head. Thank you, councillor Tierney.
Thank you, members. Item number 14. Clerk to report. I invite the clerk to update members of projects initiatives to inform the council of correspondence and to report minutes of the meetings of the committees, et cetera.
Yes, chairman, I mean, I have circulated earlier today an update report. Because members already had the report, may have a chance to read it, may have some questions. I'll happily take any questions. I'll just do a very brief summary, mainly for any members of the public who might be watching. As I said, I'm happy to take any questions. I mean, firstly, on page one, you will see the list of decisions that have been made under the delegated powers. And some of those have related to grant funding, £1,690 people and animals to enable them to operate in a COVID-19 compliant manner. There was the pledge of match funding of £2,500 to FDC's water park bid that I mentioned earlier. And also, very, very recently, in fact, last week, grant funding of £743 to the Wisbeach Child and Family Centre towards the cost of an oral health project. Without the town council's funding, that wouldn't be able to be delivered. So I think there again, that does show the importance of having some sort of emergency delegated powers without having to call a meeting of the Policy and Resources Committee, for example, just to make that one payment or to agree that one grant. Moving on to projects and service delivery, the marketplace, as you'll know, or the market itself, had a number of changes due to COVID-19. First, we're in lockdown, essential stalls only, and then lockdown finishes, we can then revert back to normal business. A second round of lockdown, which we're now out of, and fingers crossed, we'll stay out of that lockdown situation. Obviously, it has an impact on the income for the council, and that's something we need to obviously reflect upon in budget for next years. We've had three food at the marketplace events, and my understanding is they've all been very successful, even despite poor weather on occasions. And we're looking at other things in terms of continuing activity on the marketplace. Enhancements, I'll just do a quick word in terms of enhancements. We now have a total of £350,000 available. £150,000 from the county council's communities capital fund and a further £200,000, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, from the Combined Authority's growing Fendland pot. And we've allocated £50,000 of town council monies as well, so potentially a part of £400,000. Site survey works have been carried out. I think there's one more site survey work to be carried out. And then the design engineer will start looking at the tender specification so that we can invite tenders for the works. And in terms of pedestrianisation, the keeping vehicles out of the marketplace between 4am, sorry, between 7am and 4pm each day. I've recently been informed by the county council that they are about to carry out legal process to put in place the traffic order and to begin organising the infrastructure works in terms of lining, signing, et cetera. So things really, I think, in the new year can start to move forward at a pace. Increasing allotments tenancy, which is really good, that's one benefit from COVID. I think it's made people think more about being in the outdoors and to grow your own. We've had some clearance of rubbish and fly tipping from Dowgate site, and we're also having a new gate fitted at Apely Lane, following which we've cleared the fly tipping that's happened there. And thanks to Fendland District Council for removing a burnt-out car from the site for us, which they did under their abandoned vehicle powers. Communications work continues and is always on the up, and I just mentioned that the town guide 2021 is underway, and it's normally published about March time. As you all know, we've had to cancel all of the council's events for this year. But things have happened in place, such as the Christmas lights switch-on video film, which everybody, I'm sure, will have seen. And it was very, very, very successful, and I think it's had something like 4,000 viewings since it was broadcast on the 29th. And there's also been a different approach to the Wisbeach Christmas Fair, which couldn't happen this year, obviously, having normally having a fairground, 100 trades, et cetera. But we've introduced all the partnership, has put in place what we've called Christmas crackers, which is highlighting things that are going on in Wisbeach, so that people realise that Christmas isn't cancelled this year, it just needs to be operated differently. Members will have seen obviously the Christmas lights this year, and we've extended the scheme, so it includes the Aldi roundabout and also the very, very impressive, and that's the feedback that I've heard from people, artificial Christmas tree on the marketplace. There were obviously, as you can imagine, some infrastructure issues, a number of electrical issues, and we continue to get failings, mainly caused by the bad weather, wet water gets into the electrics, but we're rectifying those with our contractors as soon as possible, if feasible. It's always difficult when you don't own, or in cases where you don't own the electrical supply. Mayor's fundraising continues at a pace. I don't know whether mayor wants to make any comment, but there's information in the report. In terms of the town hall and the office, we're still operating on the basis that contact is telephone, email or post. Any visitors who do need to come in, such as contractors, have to operate in a COVID-19 compliant manner. Work is in hand to repair a leak in the roof of the gents toilet, and also there's progress in terms of the new telephone system. We've got three handsets that were donated to us free of charge. And we're also engaging with, we're waiting for quotation from a local electrician in terms of the IT type works. In terms of staffing, we now have the post of markets and allotment officer filled as a result of interviews in September. The officer took up post on the 3rd of November. He's been provided with appropriate level of induction, work-related clothing, and although relatively new, in post, early days, things are looking positive. And I think it's worth making the comment that this is the first time the council has been fully staffed since the end of May 2019. But we're now on the up. In terms of correspondence, I've received a letter from the secretary slash treasurer of the Wisbeach Life Saving Club, expressing the club's appreciation of the financial support which was provided by the council in 2019. I won't read the letter in full, but it's making the point that, you know, a lot of less has happened in this year. However, they've just now got round to sending that, but it was £120 from the grants budget in 2019, but it's always good to receive and to record thanks. I've listed also, since the last meeting of the council, the only committees that have met during that time is the planning committee, which is met on seven occasions. Minutes have been circulated, and I've asked members to note the meetings are taking place and the decisions that have been reached. As I said, happy to take any questions, but same members do have a full copy of the report. And if they've got questions after having been able to read it, I'm happy to take those off camera, so to speak. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Lynn, please.
Yeah, not a question. Terry, just a thank you to you and all the staff for all the work you've done this year. It's been amazing, and I really appreciate it, especially the work on the marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Anybody else, please? Any comments from any member? Yeah, I would like to thank Terry and staff for the great, great work and helping me as well with the
Thank you very much, honest.
Fundraising, really much appreciated. Okay, item number 15. Date of next meeting. To agree a date for the next meeting of Wisbeach Town Council. I will take proposals from members as to date and time of the next meeting. Clerk, yeah?
Yes, obviously, it's a member decision, but I would like to propose, if it's okay with members, that the date of the next meeting be Monday, the 1st of February. That will give the council, it's already been alluded to a couple of times, we need to get Policy and Resources Committee to consider initial budget, and then council needs to agree a final budget. Normally, we need to get information to Fendland District Council, normally about 13th, 14th of February. This year, it's the 5th. And I think because we haven't yet started budget planning because of so many uncertainties this year, my suggestion is if we can have the next meeting on the 1st of February, that will give us maximum time to consider any financial implications for the next financial year and in time to get our preset requests to the district council in time of their deadline by Friday, the 5th. That would be a suggestion from me, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any member would like to propose, yeah, come some, councillor Hoy, please?
Yeah, I think that sounds a good idea. Happy to propose.
Do I have a second, please?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Councillor, tip? Oh, sorry, who first?
Who wants to go first?
Can I have a second, please?
Just write someone's name down for the minutes, Terry, please.
I think Gary was slightly before Peter, so I'll take Gary.
Yeah. Can I have a vote, please?
Thank you. That's unanimous, and I'll send out an email reminder for members so they can get it in dairies. Thank you, chairman.
I think that's the end of the meeting.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
I wish everybody Merry Christmas. I know it's a bit different, but
Yeah, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
I'm going to enter the stream in a moment, but anyone who's staying for the castle meeting could just